O'er God, we just go to you tonight, praying for guidance, Lord, as we make decisions on behalf of everyone here in the city, Lord. Also want to lift up the Muse family, Lord. I want to pray for Paul as he gains strength, Lord. Just comfort him, Lord. Give his nurses and doctors the knowledge and the skill and care to treat him, Lord. And I pray for his family during this time as they're at the hospital and being there for them to strengthen them. Ask you your name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Louis, would you like to lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City council meeting for the month of April 2021 will please come to order. Let everybody please silence your phones. There's Nancy. There you are.
Chris Foster?
Here.
Sharon Williams?
Here.
Casey Griffin?
Here.
Louis Short?
Here.
Rebecca Prince?
Here.
Ally Sugg?
Here.
Melissa Choat?
Here.
Armuse? Jerry Lynn? The press?
Let the record show, we have a quorum. Next item on the agenda, waive reading and improve the minutes is presented for the March city council meeting.
So moved.
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Rebecca Prince?
Yes.
Melissa Choat?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next item is approval of the payments journal for the month of March 2021. Do we have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Melissa Choat?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Casey Griffin?
Yes.
Rebecca Prince?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next item is approval of street sanitation, general, community center, O and M, and miscellaneous funds for the month of March 2021.
So moved.
Casey Griffin?
Yes.
Rebecca Prince?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Melissa Choat?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next item, you have your supervisors' packets in your, um, let me see if I'm following this here. Supervisors' reports in your packets. Are there any questions?
Doug, any updates on any new? I liked that you did that last time and kind of just told us anything new coming into town? Anything new since last month?
Not since last month.
We have, we have one, but we're not allowed to talk about it right now, so.
Ooh.
Isn't that right, Doug? Okay.
I know, I really want to know.
We're sworn to secrecy. Next item is bond issue. Anybody, any discussion of the bond issue?
Where are we at?
Well, we, uh, the bond council and Stevens are working very hard. We're having to provide them a lot of information. We talked about past audits that we are trying to, of course, we're a year behind on audits, so it, uh, we're going to work through that. The bond sale, we're trying to make, we're trying to do it, approve, and get the approval for the bond sale on next council meeting. There'll be a 30-day referendum, so we hope to close, we hope to close though at that time, and then we should have money in hand by the first of July.
Is July, is July, like, if that's not a firm date, that all has to do with the rate settling?
Not of the rates, no. It's just a, it's a target date. It's, uh, no, the rates should be, when they issue the bonds, then the rates should be set at that time.
Once we get the fund as the next step of bidding process for each individual?
Yeah, which we're doing now. We're getting quotes from, for most all of the projects, and you've got 90 days to spend 5% of the bond fund. Isn't that right, Lisa? And, but, but we're, we're really on top of it, Scott and Stacy. Thank y'all for your hard work, and it's, uh, they've done a great job of talking to out-of-town people and getting, you know, quotes and drawings and the things that we need to, to go forward. I, really, we, we talk about these projects and we talk about that, you know, of course there's not, you know, you, you really don't need an engineer or an architect to design a splash pad. These people have put in so many splash pads that they know what they're doing a lot more than anybody else. But when it comes to beautification downtown, when it comes to sandy beach, when it comes to some of these other type, these projects, of course, the stormwater, you know, you've got to have engineers involved in the stormwater. And, um, and we, of course, we've, you know, CWB has done a stormwater master plan for us about four or five years ago, if y'all remember that. And, but, you know, that definitely needs to be, go through, you know, professionals. But when we talk about, you know, just, let's just take downtown. You know, we've had ideas, we've had, um, what was it called? Street?
Streetscape.
Streetscape, and we had, um, different people look and do some renderings and things like this, and, and we talk about lighting, well, let's do lighting like Cersei does, and, or let's do it like so, so-and-so does, and we'll outline the buildings, and we'll do this and that. Well, is that what Heber Springs needs? You know, do we have to do everything just like everybody else? And so I think we've got to bring in some help, somebody that does this, somebody that's got a, you know, that's a lot of artistic abilities, because let's do this right the first time. And I know there's a lot of lighting that goes on the buildings, and it kind of goes up, and it's a softer look. Listen to me, I act like I'm a architect, but it, uh, it can, it can really class us up. Like I said, we just, we need that thought process. So, and it may cost, you know, and it costs money every time you do that, but I think it'll be well worth on several of our projects to bring in folks that, um, that are professionals.
How involved the highway department has to be with downtown?
They won't be involved in, other than the traffic control, um, they will be on our crosswalks if we want to do some special things to our crosswalks as far as making pavers or doing something different. Yeah, you, you've always got to.
Entergy, I'm guessing, with poles, pretty much?
Well, energy, um, we've already talked to them, and they have different type of poles. Now, you know, to go underground with the electricity and do the lamps and stuff like that, you're talking about millions of dollars. It's, uh, we're limited, you know, we, what is it, 375, 385? That we approved for, um, for Streetscape, 375. And so, you know, it doesn't go very far, but, but it's going to do a lot for us, you know, so we're excited about it.
I remember someone mentioning that there were committees going to be formed on the different bond issues. Are they meeting yet? Is there anyone charged with that duty of, like, reporting? Like, is a place where we could go or the public could go to, you know, find information on progress?
As they develop, I would say yes. Um, uh, you know.
Do we need to form committees now?
I would say if you're going to do committees, you need to do it now. Yeah. Yeah.
So who's in charge of that? Or, so are you going to put committees together?
No, I think I'll, I'll let folks stand up that want to, um, help and be on those committees, and we will, um, we'll develop them from there. I mean, it, you know, I, I can't put you on a stormwater committee and, and be very good, but I, you know, we can.
That's what I'm saying, you'll, you'll reach out to people and say they want to be on.
Yes.
Get form, help form the committees.
Yes, yes.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, okay. Got you. Anything else on the bond? Projects?
When will we get to see the, um, what's the word? The appraisal things? Not the right.
The bids.
Bids. Thank you.
Well, we'll have to solicit them.
Um.
Oh, they're already doing it.
They're coming in now. I'd say when, when we, when we form these committees, we'll have it all, as much as we can gather up, and so. And these projects, they're not going to develop in six months' time.
No.
You know, some of these will be three years, some of them will be two years, some will be a year. Hopefully, we can get it done pretty quick. You know, we were wanting to do a lot of the park stuff as soon as we could, as we can.
So there's no, like, day, you know?
Completion date?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like, when these bonds pass, do you have to use that money by a certain date, or how do you?
About in three years.
In three years?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Which we don't want to.
Five percent within 90 days?
Yeah, yeah. Which is not going to be very difficult.
Right.
But, and we don't want to drag it out three years either, so. But I'm very excited about, about where we're going in, in these projects, and just like I said, you know, let's put these committees together and, and, um, and try to all get along.
If we can't get along throughout the.
If we go out and ask the last little girl.
There you go. No, it's all good. It's all good, and, and we need that, but we also need, as a committee, that, you know, of course, we've got, you know, I'll, I'll recognize the talented women that we have here on our council, but for Chris and I to go out there and start decorating downtown, we got a problem. So, um, so that's where even our committee is, our committees are going to have to reach out to some professional designers, and so. Anything else? Burn ordinance. We need to read this three times. Y'all have the burn ordinance in front of you? Anybody?
I'll read it.
Want to read that?
I'll do it.
Okay.
An ordinance amending in part the Heber Springs Municipal Code, Chapter 7.32, burning, declaring an emergency and for other purposes. Whereas the City Council of the City of Heber Springs has determined that there is a need to control the burning of leaves, trash, or combustible materials within the city, and whereas in order to properly control the burning of leaves, trash, or combustible materials within the city, it is necessary to amend Chapter 7.32 of the Heber Springs Municipal Code. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Heber Springs, Arkansas as follows. Section 1, Section 7.32.03 of the Heber Springs Municipal Code is hereby repealed. Section 2, Section 7.32.09 of the Heber Springs Municipal Code is hereby amended to read as follows. 7.32.09 penalty. Any person violating the provisions of Chapter 7.32 of the Heber Springs Municipal Code shall be fined in a sum of not less than $100, no more than $200. Section 3, all laws, ordinances, resolutions are parts of the same that are inconsistent with the most, with the provisions of this ordinance are hereby repealed to the extent of such inconsistency. Section 4, it is hereby found and determined that the burning of leaves, trash, or combustible materials within the city needs to be controlled for the protection of the health and safety of the citizens of the City of Heber Springs, Arkansas, and being necessary for the preservation of the public health, safety, and welfare in emergency is hereby declared to exist, and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and
Thank you, Rebecca. Doug, I have one question on this. The only things that changed were the fee, with the penalties, the fines?
We increased the fines and we pulled out the time. It used to be 30 minutes before sunrise and 30 minutes before sunset.
Was that section 1?
Yes.
Do we have a, a motion to read by title only? Can we do this by title only? Well, we got to vote first, yeah.
Just spin the rules and place the, uh, ventilation, I mean, ordinance on title only, reading title only.
For the second reading.
Second reading.
Second. Nancy.
Rebecca Prince?
Yes.
Sorry, Melissa Choat?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Casey Griffin?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
And ordinance amending in part the Heber Springs Municipal Code, Chapter 7.32, burning, declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
First, suspend the rules and place the ordinance on, by title only, on the third reading.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Melissa Choat?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
Casey Griffin?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Rebecca Prince?
Yes. An ordinance amending in part the Heber Springs Municipal Code, Chapter 7.32, burning, declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
Move and adopt the emergency clause.
Melissa Choat?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Casey Griffin?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Rebecca Prince?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Melissa Choat?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Casey Griffin?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Casey Griffin?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
And it's ordinance number 2021-03.
What was it, Nancy?
2021-03. Okay, because I know we're going to get asked this. Sorry, sorry. No. Go, okay, so they can burn leaves and limbs, but what, because I know there are some things that you can't burn still, like.
The only thing you're allowed to burn is leaves, limbs, and grass that are generated on the property that is being burned.
Okay. So, because I, like, passed a dumpster that was burned today, and I didn't know what was going on with that, so, but like, you can't throw stuff in a dumpster and, okay, burn it. I'm just making sure, because I know we'll get asked, what all can you burn?
Yeah, that is an ADEQ requirement. You can burn, if you're having a construction site, you can burn solid pieces of wood in a barrel with a screen, but it cannot have, it cannot be any plywood, OSB, anything treated. It has to be solid wood in pieces, and that's considered a warming fire, and that's the only thing, only kind of trade waste that can be burned.
No household trash, nothing?
No household trash, no cardboard.
Motion carried to adopt the ordinance. Next item is airport grant. Grant 19A10900, contract for engineering fees from Garver Engineering. Charlie, would you like to?
I'll give it my best. Well, first of all, I'd like to thank the council, mayor, and all other branches of the city government for the support given to the airport. It's been really great. Thank you so much. Before we get into the grant that you have there on your agenda or grant application, we have one active project ongoing right now, and that is the sealing of the taxiway. That work is partially complete, and we're just waiting on warmer, drier weather to complete that one. Just a little update. Now, um, the FAA has changed the requirements regarding the overrun on each end of the runway. It used to be, 53 years ago, when our runway was built, you only had 100 feet of overrun. You know what I mean by overrun? The requirement now is that we have 300 feet of overrun. So the runway end toward Trailwood only has 100 feet of overrun. I said that wrong. Let's go Rock Products Road. Down on the northeast end, Rock Products Road, we only have 100 feet of overrun. On the Trailwood end, we now have 200, so we're only 100 feet short on that end, but we're 200 feet short on the Rock Products end. So this 90-some-odd-thousand grant application that we're asking to submit, asking for approval for, is to only provide for the engineering services for this project. This is going to be a very extensive project. Once it's approved and commences, there's lots and lots of dirt got to be hauled in, particularly on the Rock Products end. One reason, it's 200 feet instead of 100, and it's a lot steeper slope on that end, so it's going to take a lot. So currently, what the proposal is, is let's get it designed, figure out how much it's going to cost, once we know the extent of the work, and we've been working with the FAA, they're all, they're programming, they're ready to program the funding, which will come in the outlying years to actually do this construction. So it's important for everybody to understand, we're not extending the runway. So, you know, that might be something that we all have to help put out in the community, because I'm sure when folks see dump trucks coming to the airport and pull the dirt, they're going to say, yep, they're extending the runway, but that's not what we're doing. So we want to make sure everybody understands that. There's one other grant mentioned there. It has to do with RSA 2004. That's, will be upcoming. That's to provide funding for the actual construction. So what we're asking for tonight is approval of the engineering grant application. Can I answer any questions? Anybody might have?
And that is a 90-10 grant, 90 from the feds and 10 from the state, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
And one reason I left, left out, one important reason for doing this RSA project, RSA stands for runway safety area. Right now, we can't do night approaches into our, not instrument approaches into our airport. That could have an impact on survival flight, for example. Weather's down, and they need to get in there. Night approaches are not allowed now because we don't have enough amount of overrun. However, that wouldn't be a factor for helicopter, but it's a factor for fixer. So once we get this project going, going on, then we'll get our night approaches back, and that's really important to us.
Charlie, what do you expect the construction to look like?
I'm sorry?
What do you expect the construction to look like?
What, it would look like?
In 2024?
I'm.
Well, no, like, for the runway. Is it going to be extended?
I cannot see that in my crystal ball. We just don't have the room to do it.
Right.
And the FAA has tightened the requirements on what they call an object-free zone. For example, if we wanted to extend the runway toward Rock Products Road, the highway department is now within that object-free zone, based on their current standards, and it only gets worse if we come back, you know, to the southwest. So as I look forward, I, we've got a 4,000-foot runway, and I think that's what it's always going to be. Any other questions?
Will this, will this be paved eventually, or it's just?
No, no. It, it will be grassy area. It'll be the same elevation as the runway.
Right.
And it's just to accommodate an airplane that lands long.
Right.
Rolls out there on the end. Kind of like the runaway truck zone you got up here on Highway 65 before we hit Marshall.
Yeah.
That's what it's for.
I think a plane can land here now. Will their jet can get in?
Oh, yeah.
The problem is they can't get it at night, is that correct? The problem is they can't get it at night.
They can't get it at night, that's true. That's true. Other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. Charlie made a good point. We need to, um, I've already been approached several, several times on, oh, are they going to lengthen the runway? And no, we're not lengthening the runway. So we're not going to take over Trailwood, so.
Good.
Yeah. Most of them have come from your neighborhood, so, but that is, that is not the purpose of Do we want, does anyone need to make a motion? We need to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the grant fee.
Melissa Choat?
A second.
Your voting?
Yes.
Rebecca Prince?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Casey Griffin?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
I don't think we need to vote on the, um, on the RSA grants 624. These, um, engineering goes with that project, so. Isn't that right, Charlie? That's the same, same. It's Brian here. Next item on the agenda is a lease agreement for two police cars, lease purchase agreement?
It says three.
I mean, three cars, I'm sorry. Brian, you want to give a little rundown on the type of vehicles and?
I'll say the same thing, Charlie. I appreciate all those that voted for the police department, increasing the car fleet, even though it failed. We appreciate everybody's thoughts on that. I have gone to the fallback plan, and I've, I've been looking at a lease agreement that would allow us to go ahead and get. And I've, I've been looking at a lease agreement that would allow us to go ahead and get three cars right now. And they would be outfitted, believe me, for about thirty thousand, a little over thirty thousand dollars. And, you know, I'm asking the council just to allow me to go ahead with that lease, so that, you know, we're gonna be making that payment over, four payments. One this year out of fixed assets, and then three more payments after that, so. That would replace our oldest cars. We've got some with a hundred and sixty thousand miles on them. Needs to put quart boil every week in it to keep it going, so. Those are some of the SRO cars. You know, it's not good for them kids to be up there seeing twelve, thirteen-year-old cars, so. I'm hoping to get those replaced, so. Do what?
What did you?
Dodge Durangos. I had sent out to the council all the different amounts on the cars. But I would like to try the Durango. I spoke with the sheriff, he's got several of them. And, you know, we've had some issues with the Chargers. I would like to see how they hold up in comparison, so. Anybody got any questions?
I know you guys work out of your cars most of the time. I would love to see like a long-term replacement plan for, you know, ongoing, for next year with that budget. And those, we talked about, you and I talked about that, like different markers for that.
And one of the reasons I wanted to go with the lease is to look at the budget year by year. And if we can buy another car next year in the budget, let's do it. But at least we would be replacing one year, you know, for the next three years. So, just trying to get ahead of the curve a little bit on this.
With that lease agreement, do we still pay for the upkeep, the maintenance?
Yes. Other than the standard warranty, a hundred thousand miles, our train.
Brian, have you heard anything back from, because you were working on a grant for cars?
That will not apply under the lease. And we can't go to a private lender, is my understanding, so.
Yeah, but are y'all still working on that? So, maybe we could add?
No, I spoke with Tammy Moser about that, and we don't fit the criteria, basically.
Do you want to give it a block rate?
No, sir.
Another question. Are these cars gonna help improve their quality of how your officers are able to handle any situations they're in?
No, sir, the officers, that's an individual officer-on-person issue. That's not really, our equipment is getting us there right now, okay?
Yeah.
But we're, we're in a situation right now where we, it might not, okay? We're trying to, we're trying to just get that, everything standardized, okay? Everything looks the same when you sit in them. They're basically their office. You know, they've got ACIC in the cars. They, everything, when you sit down in there, you need to be able to go and never come back to the office, period. And that's what we're shooting for here, so. Some safety issues, you know, we're, we're spending a little more money on the outfit as far as, you know, backseats that are plastic instead of the vinyl, which we deal with people with all kinds of issues. And so, that helps in the cleaning and safety for the officers, so.
Will the mileage allowance be enough on those?
There's no, there's no mileage.
Okay.
Restriction on that. I actually checked with another lending agency. And they did have a mileage allowance. And that was one of the reasons, I kinda stepped away from it. Looks like Dodge has probably got the best, you know, as far as financing goes. The Ford and Chevrolets are just out of our reach. They're just more expensive. So, I think, I think Dodge will do us a good job. We've got a lot of cars that we spend a lot of money on, and I can get those figures out to y'all. But they're, they're just old.
And we have the option to shop local here.
Do what?
We have the option to shop local here.
In-state bid, so it doesn't matter where you go, you're gonna be paying the same, same money.
Same, yeah.
So, you know, we, we're going with the outfit because I want it professionally done. You know, we've had officers in the past doing all of that work. You gotta pull them off the street to allow them to work on the cars and install everything. And I'm just trying to get away from that. I want people that do cars to work on the cars. And so, that's the reason I'm going to Dodge on that. Because they leave the Dodge factory, and they go across the road to a place that does outfits. That's all they do. So, comes out very professional. We had Lloyd's car done in Little Rock at Dana Safety. And, you know, that's what they do. They do a good job.
I, I was referencing the difference between using Red River and whoever the other bank or?
Oh, yeah, that was just a, I was looking at that. But when you start dealing with Bancorp, you know, they're waiting to see what Dodge is doing. And then undercut them twenty-three dollars, you know? So, why would I, you know, pick a local person out over twenty-three bucks?
Right, that's, yes, that's what I meant.
Well, I'll make a motion that Brian can go ahead with the lease agreement for three police cars.
And I'll second that motion.
I got, I don't, I have a question. How are these cars gonna, are they gonna be more qualified?
Can you wait, hey, can, can you wait till after the, can you wait till the comment period?
I'm sorry, sir, I, I will.
You're fine.
I'll just, I'll just carry on. Where you voted on this. Because if not, then you're just gonna vote instead of listening to what people believe you know, because there's a serious problem going on with the training and the quality of stuff that's going. And then police cars are not gonna improve you right now. Yes, you need police cars. You're gonna need all that.
Uh-huh.
You guys are gonna do it right here, but-
Can we?
But you got a lot of other problems going on.
Let's wait till-
I would be happy to sit down with you in my office and discuss any of those issues. But it's not really part of what we're talking about here as far as the hours go.
No, it's not. Can, can you wait till after?
I will.
Okay, that'd be great. Thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Chris Foster?
Yes.
Casey Griffin?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
Rebecca Prince?
Yes.
Melissa Cho?
Yes.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Motion carried.
Yeah.
Are the guns on all right?
In the, his report, Brian asked about the purchase of some rifles.
Yeah, I've already done that.
Do you want me to comment on that?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yes.
It was under twenty thousand dollars.
Okay.
And so, the mayor went ahead and authorized. I was just kinda to give y'all a heads up on that because-
Sure.
Political winds are blowing in funny ways right now.
Yes.
And right now, the Department of Defense, we have guns on loan from them. And if they decide to pull those rifles, then we won't have any, other than personal rifles, which I do not agree with the police department, making officers carry their personal rifles. Now, if an officer wants that option, because he wants to spend more money on one or whatever, that's fine. But, and, and we've adjusted our policy for that.
Sure.
But I believe that every officer ought to be supplied with everything they need to do the job, just like the cars. And-
Absolutely.
So.
I just brought it up because it was in your letter here. We, we thank you for your efforts to make lemonade out of lemons.
Well, like I say, DOD may come in and say, hey, we want back. And we don't even have enough shotguns right now, so it's, it's. I was working on the shotgun when I realized this, this rifle problem become a, it's been far more serious.
They don't have shotguns now?
They do.
We've got shotguns, they're thirty years old. You know, they're, you know, came to us from wherever, you know? But, you know, they're not tactical shotguns. They won't fit in the gun mounts in the cars. That's something that we're doing is, is dual mounts in every car. So, they've got their shotgun, their rifle are right there, ready. And, you know, we're just trying to make those improvements that are, that are basic, as far as I'm concerned. Any other questions?
That's it. Yeah, I'm really proud of our, our police and the training that you're doing with your officers.
I, I would like to say if anybody wants to see Frank and Bill's getting tased, or I've got a dumb call now.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Get tased for training this evening.
He's been texting me, said that, it, err.
Is he the only one that got tased?
No, Joe Dale.
He did as well. They were both the ones that hadn't gone through taser training.
Are the new, are the new Durangos gonna have to be the silver?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, if you ever wanna see tough, grown men scream, then just-
No, it's horrible, don't watch it.
It is.
I don't wanna watch.
I don't wanna watch.
It's good that they volunteer, and I'll say this about the men. It's good that they volunteer for these things, to see what it's like before they put somebody else through.
Absolutely.
And so, I have to commend them on that, so.
Next item of new business is the urban deer hunt for two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two. We've decided that we're gonna continue with the urban deer hunt. Same process. We won't be having a cleaning station down at Public Works. You'll be glad to hear that, Ronnie and Scott. But you will get your deer tags at seven twenty-five South Fourth Street, down at Public Works. It's where you will get your tags. And it's been a, you know, we, the numbers have gone down the last few years as far as the harvest. But it's still, y'all, y'all see the danger that we have in town a lot of the times with, with the deer, so. And we haven't had anybody very, I don't know of any problems we've had in the last few years of people poaching on other people's land. And so, we just haven't had those issues, so.
When this, when we first started the urban deer hunt, years ago, they did a spotlight hunt. Went around at night, finding, and I know that they said at that time, in a couple of years, we'll do it again. And it hasn't been done. Is that, is there any need to do another survey on the deer, or are we?
On spotlighting?
Yeah.
Uh, I just, I haven't heard that. Louis, first I've heard.
Yeah, when we, when we first started this, I suppose, they went around, the officers made notes of where the deer were, deer were traveling at night.
Yeah.
And Monty Carmichael with game and fish, they went around and kinda got an average.
Yeah.
And this all began, but, okay.
You're talking about the hunters spotlighting, or just?
No, it was a, it was a survey to kinda get an average of how many deer were looking. And that's why I think the numbers have gone down too, because it's working.
Yeah, yeah. Well, we, we hope that's, that's a good thing, so. But I think we had, how many did we have last year? Scott, you remember? Yeah, I think the first few years, we had a hundred and fifty, hundred and twenty, something like that. And, and it's been going down every year since. So, last year, like I said, thirty or forty kills last year, so.
Are they still doing the first go-to-go to the hunter's feeding band or whatever?
Yes, yeah.
Did I miss that or not?
Feed the hungry in or无所谓?
Yeah.
Sorry, I missed that.
It's a good program, yeah, yeah. Do we have a motion to continue the deer hunt? Urban deer hunt?
Second.
Nancy?
Casey Griffin?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Melissa Cho?
Yes.
Rebecca Prince?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Uh, yeah, I'm smelling it too. Stacy, do you smell the smoke?
We're all smelling the smoke.
Y'all do?
Something. Yes.
Yeah. There's something.
We can all smell it.
Yeah. So, it's kinda weird.
It smells electrical. He's gonna go check it out. It's not like-
Good nose. Okay, we did that.
Do we get, I think we gotta vote.
What was?
I thought we did.
Oh, okay, running outside.
It's outside that came in.
They just pull in fresh air, and then that's smoke right into the building, so.
Okay.
They come from that way.
That makes sense.
We did, we did vote. We did vote.
We, we voted.
Yeah.
Did we finish voting?
Pardon?
Did we finish voting?
Yes.
We did, yes, on the deer hunt, yes. Next item is a resolution for fire department on a fifty thousand dollar USDA grant. And we need to pass a resolution to accept this grant. We've got, I can-
Is it a hundred percent, or?
Hi?
Is it a hundred percent, just grant?
It's just, it's a fifty thousand dollar grant, yes. And I feel confident that we will get that. And we, hopefully, that fifty thousand, and then we've applied for an Act eight thirty-three grant for a hundred thousand, which could buy a hundred fifty thousand dollars, a really good buy, on a rescue truck. And so, this would help us pay for all of it.
So, we did get this grant, though?
Yeah.
This is one to accept it?
Yes.
Okay.
Do we need to read it?
I don't think we, yeah, one time, one time.
A resolution of the City Council of City of Heber Springs, authorizing and providing for the acceptance of a grant for the purpose of providing a portion of the cost of acquiring, constructing, enlarging, improving, and/or extending its City of Heber Springs Fire Department fire rescue vehicle and equipment to serve an area lawfully within its jurisdiction to serve. Whereas it is necessary for the City of Heber Springs to raise a portion of the cost of such undertaking by applying for grant assistance. Whereas the city intends to obtain government, obtain assistance from the United States Department of Agriculture, herein called the government, acting under the provisions of the Consolidated Farm and Rural Agri, Rural Development Act, seven USC nineteen twenty-one et cec, in the planning, financing, and supervision of such undertaking by the city. Now, therefore, in consideration of the premises, the city hereby resolves to accept a grant if approved and funded by the government in an amount not to exceed fifty thousand dollars, under the terms offered by the government. And the mayor and secretary recorder are hereby authorized and empowered to take all action necessary to, or appropriate in the execution of all written instruments, as may be required in regard to, or as evidence of such grant, and to operate the facility under the terms offered in said grant agreement. Make a motion to accept the resolution.
Second.
So, this will just be put back in a fund until we get the other hundred thousand dollars? Is that correct?
Yes, um, yes.
Okay.
Matter of fact, it, well, we'll, you, USDA requires that you put this in a separate banking, a separate, we'll have to open up a separate account. And that'll come next here on the agenda.
Okay, Casey Griffin?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Melissa Cho?
Yes.
Rebecca Prince?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next item is to open a checking account for the fire department grant, this USDA grant. It must be in a separate account all by itself. And so, David, our treasurer, said he would like to use First Security Bank to, to open up an account.
Move that we open the account?
Move that we open the account, uh, for deposit of the USDA funds for the fire department.
Second.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Melissa Cho?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Rebecca Prince?
Yes.
Casey Griffin?
Yes.
Motion carried. I'd like to, uh, uh, do a little add-on, um, for accepting the gift from, uh, First Arkansas Bank and Trust on, uh, Mr. Larry Wilson, the chairman and president of, uh, First Arkansas Bank and Trust, who have offered us the, uh, bank building there on Main Street. It's a, it's a million dollar gift. We will, um, hopefully, um, be able to convert that into a fire station. Maybe do, uh, some city hall, some, um, municipal offices and fire station. We're still in the, we're getting some final estimates back on, on the remodeling of the building. Mr. Wilson definitely needs, they've been carrying this building for several months and, and, uh, been waiting for us to kinda make our decisions on whether the bond passed the, for the funding of it or not. Uh, this is a great, great opportunity for us, a great asset for us, and it's gonna work really well. So, I need the council's approval to accept this wonderful gift from, uh, First Arkansas Bank and Trust.
Since the bond issue did, did not pass, have we looked into what it would, what it's gonna take to get, to move in? What, how, what it's gonna do, take to move in to renovate it to the fire department?
The first, uh, the first quote we had for just the interior, um, is a little under a hundred thousand dollars. And.
What all of that entail?
That would be showers, lockers, kitchen, um, some walls, meeting rooms. It, uh.
Was there already a break room in there?
There is. Yeah, there's no stove, and it's not a, it's a very, very small break. Yeah, yeah, they might as well stay where they are. But, um, it'll work and, and, um, we, um, you know, like I said, I, I have all the confidence in the world that we can, uh, in the next year or two, add some bays to it and, and do what it needs to be to be a first-class facility for the city.
So, if we went ahead and did this, how soon would they, the fire department start using it? Would they use it without bays?
They, they can, that's not very practical.
Right.
You know, I'm gonna say, no. I think City Hall, we might use it sooner than that, uh, depending on the layout that we're working on. But, uh, but it won't be long.
Is there any reason why everybody couldn't move over there? I mean, just move out of City Hall now and maybe sell that building?
I don't know that I want with the police anymore. You know, um, that's, that's, that's just, that is not real healthy. So, um, could, but, um, and you very rarely see any facilities in the whole state, Greenbrier, wherever you go, that you see fire and police together. You just don't. Chief, have you seen that very often?
No, sir.
Yeah.
And, and I would like to, I would make this comment before, um, that it's two completely different entities. And when we're dealing with people, usually it's at their worst. And if we've got them over there in the facility, you know, you've got firemen or people off the street that are coming in to see the mayor, that are having to witness this. And it's, uh, we got cameras and we're not doing anything wrong.
Right.
Pretty sure you're on that, but, um, you know, it's just not a healthy environment for anybody. I mean, you know, Lisa had a guy come in with a gun, uh, that prompted the security protocols that we put in place and that. So, I mean, times are changing, folks, and it's hard to keep up with. Think about that even when you're, when you're the mayor's office. I think you've got to do some prescription at doors. What that looks like for y'all, but, uh.
So where would those hundred thousand dollars come from?
Uh, it can come from, uh, fire equipment, it can come from general fund. There are a lot of people, you know, fund balances, we've got some pretty good fund balances in fire. And so, um, and that doesn't have to happen immediately, you know, but.
We just have to give an answer.
Yes, yes.
What about, uh, utilities and things like that? This bill, I would imagine this building's tighter and more efficient than the current building, so do we have any idea of what the difference would be?
I think our insurance on that building will be about twenty, if, if you insure it for a million and a half dollars, uh, that'll be about twenty-five hundred dollars a year. Utilities, I think, are running about eighteen hundred dollars a month, so. At the, at the bank building, yes.
How's that compare to what we have, what we have now?
What are our utilities, Lisa?
I replaced every air conditioner in the last year, so I.
Yeah, I mean, we.
Well, besides that, the utilities at that building won't reduce because it should be occupied.
Right, but not with.
Right, it will, there'll be some reduction, but I, I would imagine if the building is going to be empty and at the disposal of the police department, won't you be able to take advantage of more space?
Yes, we've already been slowly moving into like the counts where council room was, we're using it for a train room.
Right.
They've been sneaking around taking.
We've been hoping everybody would go on that.
Pushing, you're getting pushed out the door, man.
Uh, yes, we are.
I, cause I asked about utilities and they said, energy, the monthly average was one thousand one hundred and fifty-four and center point was a hundred and twenty-three, and Heber Springs water was sixty-nine dollars, but we wouldn't pay that, right?
No.
So, it would be less than thirteen hundred a month.
And we have no property tax or anything, so, yeah.
So you need a motion to go ahead and accept the gift, is that?
Yes, yes, sir.
Make a motion to go ahead and set the bank at, at fire department in City Hall?
Okay.
Second.
Rebecca Prince?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Abstain.
Melissa Cho?
Yes.
Casey Griffin?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
And again, uh, motion carried. And again, I would like to thank First Arkansas Bank and Trust and Wilson's. It's just a, uh, a further evidence of their commitment to the prosperity of Heber Springs and, and, um, we're just very fortunate to, uh, to have somebody like this and in the community that, uh, gives us this kind of gift, so. Okay, um, Melissa, I mean, it's, we've got open mic. Do we wanna give a little rundown on SFC? That, the company that's coming to look at our Parks Department?
Yes, and they are a nationwide company. They work with the public and the private sector. They have done projects in over two thousand communities nationwide, and they've overseen like ten billion in projects. And so, they're gonna come talk to us about our goals and resources, strategies, and desired outcomes for Parks and Rec. And then they're also having a stakeholder introduction session, which is open, um, as well. And tour our assets. And hopefully, we will make a decision to do a feasibility study and see, you know, if they can offer us any help with those assets.
And they've already said that they can help.
They've done a preliminary.
For a price.
They want.
Yeah.
For a price.
It is a cost, um, and they've looked at preliminary finances already. But they're coming in person. It will be, um, twelve-thirty to two-thirty will be the strategy session in room, did you tell me room one? Room one here at the community center. And then, right after that, two-thirty to three-thirty will be the stakeholder introduction session, um, where they're gonna discuss needs, opportunities, and challenges. So I'm excited to get these subject experts here, you know, hopefully to offer, um, some, some new ideas.
Thank you. I do wanna say that, uh, since Lisa's been up here, um, if y'all have noticed on your financial statements, we've gone for twenty-five thousand a month in losses to break an even, so thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Casey, do you wanna talk about Makers Market?
Yes, Makers Market will start May first, and that's five oh one day. So we're gonna have, um, hot dogs, and hopefully people will have specials that they can, things they can sell for five oh one. Ally and I will be there with our Heber T-shirts and cups, stickers, hats. What else do you wanna add?
Hats. Hats. They're having a, a food drive.
Are they going to?
Yeah, the chamber's gonna have a food drive for the food pantry. And they're just trying to get all the businesses involved if they can. It's, it's actually like a statewide celebration for five oh one, not statewide, everybody that's in the five oh one area code, which is the majority, or the central part of Arkansas, so, um, but I think it'll, it's, I like that the chamber's getting behind that and trying to get other businesses behind it and.
I think she might have some shirts too, that she's having done.
Yeah, so, um, yeah, so come down to the Makers Market.
Yeah.
Nine to two. And, yeah, that's it.
And who is it that's, um, cooking five hundred and one hot dogs they're gonna give away?
Uh, Kendrick.
Kendrick, catch him, yeah.
Yeah.
Waste connections, yeah. So, it'll be a fun time.
I think there's gonna be more than five hundred and one hot dogs.
Oh, yes, yes. And you have, you did give the dates of Maker Ma, Makers Market.
Uh, it's gonna be the first and third Saturdays of May, June, September, and October. For now.
We hope this is.
As of now, yes, but always changes.
And is this gonna be at Courthouse Square?
Yes, on the lawn. It's our third year.
Yeah. Seems to be more successful every, every weekend they're out there. It's been great. Before we adjourn, I would like to, uh, ask everybody to keep Paul Muse and his family in their prayers. Paul's going through quite a bit. It's gonna be a long recovery for him and for their families. So, if y'all would just keep him in your hearts. Do we have a?
Do you open mic?
Open mic, yes. Anybody?
You all know me, I think y'all are headed in a great, I think they're headed in a great, perfect direction, y'all been wanting to go. And I see it, but I see a lot of stitching. I've talked to several of you about it over the time that I've been around here. And, uh, you're headed in the right direction, and I see the great things. This should be like a mini Disneyland at times, it's so beautiful here. I love this place, so caring and giving, but, uh, we do need some advancements. There's a lot of things that, you know, just aren't making sense, so. I've noticed that the city and county like to bicker a lot sometimes, so I've bickered with both of you.
What?
One point already. Yeah.
Huh? That we bicker?
It, it's not on our.
I think you need, I think you need everything you need. I'm not here, I don't need this mic. I just wanna know, I just want you to know that I'm glad to be here in this neighborhood. And I see the great things that you all wanna see, and you all are on the right path for it, but I've seen a lot of other things that need fixing with all this, because when you get plastic surgery, you don't just change your outside, you have to change your insides too. So, we're gonna move forward with that also, because you can't just beautify the inside or the outside and think the inside things are gonna change. It all comes to light. Dealing with the county right now has some issues, and I'll be dealing with the city too. Your city department needs training on dealing with the mental health issues around here and the way that they present themselves. And, uh, that jail, that jail's disgusting. I don't understand why the county hasn't kept up with it, it was not that old. And since you both share responsibilities, but the cities, the main municipality around here, I don't understand what the big deal's been so far. Because this town should have been advanced way before, beyond where it is now and where it wants to go many years ago. And I hope that you involve the community more with your committees that you're about to put out there, because you got a lot of talented people around here. I got a lot of ideas. I don't like being here a short time, but when I go places, I'm looking at things. I'm looking at location, I'm looking at presentation, I'm looking at everything that goes on around me. Why? Because I've been taught that, because if I don't, someone's gonna come around and take advantage of me. And I'm tired of being taken advantage of. And I'm not here to fight with anybody out of line, or step out of anybody's toes that don't need to be stepped on. But, uh, you already got everything you need. This should be in twenty-twenty, and COVID, this should be an eye-opener for the whole United States of America. And an opportunity to step back from all the rushing that we do every day that others force us to do. To stop and take that breath that we all say we want every day, that we fight for, or we say we go to work for, but nothing ever changes. I can't leave my children in a world like that anymore, where we talk about we want change, but we only want so much, or we only want enough change for, that benefits whoever's in charge at that moment. Because in the end, we're only here for so long, and we're only allowed to do so much, and we're, we're allowed to choose what we're doing. We don't have to always follow the example of someone else. Sometimes we have to be the person that stands up, or the place that steps out and makes that change before anybody else, because it starts somewhere. Everything before this point was created before us, it'll continue on after us. There's a guide point to go by, but there's also many opportunities to stretch out and advance. Things change every day, and we're all trying to put something in a solid hold when everything changes every day. I can go on forever on millions of things, I'll just stop right here.
Thank you, thank you.
But I'm rooting for every one of you, and I'm not doing this just because I wanna be.
Thank you for your thoughts.
Thank you for your thoughts. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.